Welcome. My name is Dustin Curb and I am State Building Code Council staff. I will be the designated hearing officer today and will be conducting this hearing. I now call to order this hearing regarding proposed changes to WAC 51-55, the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. I would like to advise everyone that this hearing is being recorded and the audio file will become part of the official rulemaking file. For the record, this hearing is being held on February 9th, 2024, beginning at 10:03 a.m. at 1500 Jefferson Street, Olympia, Washington, with Zoom and teleconference options. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on proposed changes to WAC 51-55, the International Wildland Interface Code, Chapter 3 Wildland Urban Interface Areas and Section 603 Defensible Space. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, RCW 42.30, and the Administrative Procedures Act, RCW 34.05. Legal notice of this hearing was filed with the Washington State Code Reviser on December 29th, 2023. The Washington State Register number for this notice is WSR 24-02-067. Notice of this hearing was also posted on the SBCC website at sbcc.wa.gov. This hearing is being held to consider testimony on the proposed amendments filed with the CR 102 form. At this time, I will briefly explain the proposed changes. On November 18th, 2022, the Washington State Building Code Council voted to complete the adoption and amendment of the 2021 International Wildland Urban Interface Code. With an original implementation date of July 1st, 2023, all Washington code implementation dates have since been delayed until March 15th, 2024. On November 17th of 2023, the council voted to reconsider the provisions for Chapter 3 and Section 603 after receiving many comments on the adopted provisions. A pre-proposal statement of inquiry, CR 101, was filed on November 20th in accordance with RCW 34.05.310. The register number for this notice is WSR 23-23-152. On December 29th, 2023, by council direction, notice of the proposed rule, a CR 102, was filed in accordance with RCW 34.05.320. The register number for this notice is WSR 24-02-067. This rulemaking is being considered after hearing concerns raised by stakeholders and members of the public over Chapter 3, titled "Washington Wildland Urban Interface Areas and the Mapping Completed by the Washington Department of Natural Resources" and "The Requirements for the Finding of Fact." Additional concerns were expressed on the provisions for defensible space contained in Section 603. We will now hear oral testimony regarding the proposed changes. For the record, please identify yourself and whom you represent, if any. Please speak clearly so we can get a good recording of your testimony. In order to ensure that everyone has a chance to make comments in a timely manner, please limit your comments to five minutes. We will now begin testimony. And first on our list is Brad Medrude of the Association of Washington Cities. And if you are in attendance, please raise your hand, Brad, and we'll allow you to speak. All right, Brad, go ahead.
Thank you. My name again is Brad Medrude. I'm the planning manager at the City of Tumwater. I'm here on the behalf of Carl Schrader with the Association of Washington Cities. As he's unable to attend today's meeting, I'm acting as their representative at this meeting. We would like again to thank the State Building Code Council for considering the proposed amendments and for holding this hearing. We recognize the dangers of wildfire, especially in our urban areas, and support mitigation measures to reduce such risks. We support the proposed amendments being considered by the State Building Code Council in terms of mapping option two and the proposed changes for defensible space. In terms of the mapping, we support option two for the proposed amendments to Chapter 3 to revert the Washington urban code back to the original international wildland urban interface language. We are also in support of Senate Bill 6120, which passed the Senate on February 7th, and will be given a first reading today at the House. And we'll be moving forward as we hope to create a clearer state mapping system that in turn can be amended by local jurisdictions. This includes amendments that were proposed by the State Fire Marshal's Office, and we agree with those amendments. The model there is being, is similar to the model being used in California. A Calfire developed and maintains the criteria and statewide mapping and local jurisdictions can in turn can use that criteria to make adjustments to and those maps to reflect local conditions. Resulting mapping follows clear natural boundaries and roadways. So it is clear to the community and regulators what properties are subject to your urban interface code and which are not. The current Washington state mapping does not do this. And the criteria that are contained within Chapter 3 lead to similar unclear results. At the City of Tumwater, we have spent the past seven months attempting to determine the impact of mapping to our permitting system. And we're left with more questions than answers as to how mapping applies on the ground to properties in the city. As part of this process, we have spent about five months trying to work with DNR to understand the process they went through to develop the original maps. So we can try and replicate that process locally. The issue for us is that DNR has not been as responsive. My assumption is that the DNR staff frankly is overwhelmed by this. Going forward with the option, one, mapping and findings of fact processes clearly fraud, flawed, and would put a burden on local jurisdictions to essentially explain to property owners while all or part of their property is subject to the wildland urban interface code, but not providing a clear reason why or why not. That is the reason we support option two, which is to revert back to the original language in the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. In terms of the defensible space, proposed amendments, we support the proposed amendments as written to the defensible space requirements in Chapter 6 as shown. We feel this provides needed clarity and also provides the needed flexibility to recognize that in certain circumstances, there's enhanced firefighting capability within urban areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andrea Smith?
Good morning. Thank you. Andrea Smith here today on the, on behalf of the Building Industry Association of Washington. Our 8,000 members cover all segments of the residential construction industry and are generally supportive of codes that put health and safety of occupants at the forefront. I'm here today in opposition to any changes being proposed to the defensible space provisions, mainly in principle. As you may recall, my original testimony at the beginning of the code development process highlighted the fact that the council had gone above and beyond their legislative mandate to adopt only four sections of the WUWE code. Testimony from our members and some building officials alluded to this issue as well as the flawed map. But per usual, large swaths of industry opposition fell on deaf ears. And now we're here today discussing removal of one of the provisions that will never even, that was never even supposed to be adopted, all because one segment of stakeholders, groups and individuals that don't build, insure or protect homes, demand we diminish a code rooted in health and safety. Pun intended. While trees are important for many reasons, we are the evergreen state after all. I and our members recognize that defensible space is a cost-effective approach to protecting homes from wildfires. In some instances, it's even more important than home hardening. As I'm sure you're aware, the Senate passed the bill that was just discussed by the last speaker that's moving to the House now, and it would firmly tell this council that they're only to adopt the four intended provisions of the WUWE code. In addition, it would also include an emergency clause where the code cannot go into effect until a new map is completed based on risk by DNR. We are hopeful that this bill passes and are thankful to the legislature that has proved that they listen and respond to its constituents. If the council adopts the removal of defensible space, it will further illustrate the stronghold environmental activists have on this council, illuminating the polar, the politicization of a council that is supposed to be made up of subject matter, technical experts, free of bias. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you. Lynn Fitzhugh? Lynn, you can unmute now. There you go. Lynn, you should be unmuted now, and your time starts now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Lynn Fitzhugh, Restoring Earth Connection. I appreciate the time that was spent at the November meeting hashing out all of these amendments. And as these are the ones that went out for public comment, I think it is important to not start tinkering with them as they represent what you could agree on in November and what the public has now sent positive comment for. I appreciate that you improved the tree spacing and that you took into account the Association of Washington Cities' comments about what is not needed when there is an adequate water supply for a fire department. You know, and we know that there needs to be a better map. There is nothing in the previous statute to prevent you from asking DNR for exactly what you need. You have one choice to make today, whether you are going with option one or option two. Friends of Trees, Walk Chameleon Trees Campaign in the Audubon Chapters support option two. Option one, left as it, as it was, left things as it was. But I want to remind you that the Association of Washington Cities and Brad Medrude, who just spoke before me, have pointed out to you that option one depends upon an appendix from the international WUWE, which you did not pass. Without that, option one offers a path to remedy that is actually a road to nowhere. We also favor option two because it gives more decision-making to the cities and frankly, local jurisdictions know better what is happening in their location. We are not a one-size-fits-all state. So I hope next week you will vote for all these amendments as is and for option two. We feel this is the best way to avoid violating the seven Washington environmental laws and regulations, which we have tried to hold up to you throughout this process. Finally, should you be revising the WUWE for the next code cycle, which could possibly be as soon as Gulp this year, I respectfully ask that you invite in to either serve on the tag or, or at least give a presentation, someone who is familiar with the most recent forest fire science. I want to be clear that that is different than a seasoned firefighter. Most firefighters fights fires in cities and even those who have fought them in forests do not necessarily know what the forensics show about what causes more loss to property and life during a forest fire. The code passed in December 2022 was lacking because it did not understand these factors. So let's not repeat that going forward. Similarly, there does not seem to be people selected for tags who bring a climate change lens to your decision-making process. And I hope that that too can be remedied in the next cycle. Before a code leaves a tag, how, how can there be an examination of whether it violates seven Washington environmental laws? It is easier to fix in the tag than on the floor of the council. So having this kind of lens in the tag will be very helpful. Thank you.
Wendy Larson?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Hello. My name is Wendy Larson and I live in Bellingham, Washington. I am speaking as a resident and as a representative for Watt Chameleon Trees Project in Bellingham. Our request is simple. Please pass your current set of proposed amendments, including option two. A locally-based process will be superior to any one-size-fits-all state mandate when it comes to assessing the most appropriate response for homes and surrounding landscape regarding wildfire risk. Please also step forward to formally request from DNR a much better map of wildfire risk areas. After all, DNR itself has publicly admitted their current map is deficient. With option two approved, plus a better map, there's hope that improving the wildfire resilience of our truly at-risk communities can be appropriately accomplished without conflicting with other state laws and goals for carbon sequestration, environmental protection, and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Catania? If you're in the guest list, please use the raise your hand function. I'll allow you to speak. Not seeing any hands there. Next up, we got Lisa Harbert.
Uh, this is Lisa Harbert.
We can hear you. Your time starts now.
Okay, I didn't realize I was speaking. Um, I guess my only two things, and I don't know all this stuff, but I've got a project that has tree houses coming up. Are we not going to be able to allow tree houses in non-re, a non, in forested areas, I guess? And then how are we going to shade the houses? We don't have air conditioning in a lot of areas. So that, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up on our list, I have Eric Seibel. If you're in the guest room, please use the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Next up, we have Cara Whitaker. Go ahead and unmute, Cara.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Your time starts now. Sorry, Cara, I accidentally removed your permission to talk. Uh, go ahead and unmute again, and your time will start when you begin.
Okay. I'm back. And I'll lower my hand at the same time. All right. Good morning, Chair Doyle and council members. My name is Cara Whitaker, Land Use Conservation and Policy Section Manager for the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. We fully support the need to mitigate wildfire hazard to people and property as reflected by the intent of the proposed WUWE code amendments to Chapters 3 and 6. However, the new WUWE bill currently in the legislature, Senate Bill 6120, is well on its way to becoming law. And when effective, you will not have the authority to adopt either of these amended chapters. We recommend further delaying the effective date of any amendments to the state WUWE code until your rulemaking can fully reflect Senate Bill 6120 as amended and passed by the legislature. Additionally, we feel it is appropriate that the new WUWE bill eliminates the mandate that all cities and counties adopt WUWE codes requiring large defensible spaces with uncertain habitat impacts. However, local jurisdictions may still choose to adopt defensible space standards, and many have already. Our primary concern is the potential for local jurisdictions to confuse building code authority compared to critical area code authority. And we would like to ensure that critical areas continue to be protected as intended. For example, trees in riparian management zones, Oregon white oak trees, and other priority habitats and species in defensible spaces may be at risk of being removed without compensatory mitigation for lost habitat value as required under the Growth Management and Shoreline Management Acts. To help alleviate any regulatory uncertainty and unintended habitat impacts, we recommend the formation of a technical advisory committee consisting of state agency representatives and other subject matter experts to write clear guidance for implementing local WUWE codes with defensible space provisions. WUWE code guidance should be based on the best available science and placed in the context of existing state land use statutes, including the Growth Management and Shoreline Management Acts. This way, we can fulfill the need to mitigate wildfire hazard and careful balance with the needs of fish, wildlife, and ecosystems. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Carl. Next, I have Charlotte Persons. If you just want to speak towards the camera, um, the camera will pick you up and spotlight you there. You're good.
Okay. Hi. I'm Charlotte Persons. When I live in Olympia, I represent the Black Hills Audubon Society, a chapter of the National Audubon Society. We have about 1,300 members in Lewis, Mason, and Thurston counties. We ask you to pass, as it is written, the language filed November 29th that amends the 2021 Wildland Urban Interface Code amendments. Adopting that proposed language is necessary to comply with all applicable statutes. The proposed language modifies the physical space requirements so that homes will still be protected from wildfires. However, thousands of trees will not be removed. Preserving trees will prevent the wildland urban interface codes from conflicting with at least seven state laws that protect trees because of their many environmental services to us humans. Protecting trees around residences will also preserve wildlife habitat in both rural and urban landscapes. The 2015 update of Washington's State Wildlife Action Plan goes part of Chapter 4 to ecosystems in developed areas. These developed areas include urban areas and land zone for agriculture. Surprisingly, 28 species of greatest concern for conservation are associated with developed areas. Chapter 4 discusses at length the need to protect salmon-bearing streams that run through developed areas, often multiple developed areas. Pre-shave salmon-bearing streams and keep them full so the beetle factors across the song preserve and bird habitat. Because of human development and climate change, the total number of birds in the western states has been reduced by about 25% in the last 30 years. And you are well aware, Washington state's population is predicted to increase by 20% by 2050. As development occurs, we must work hard, preserve our urban and rural bird habitats, so we do not lose another up to 60% or 80% of our birds like stakes on the eastern side of the Rockies. Trees in urban and rural areas provide habitat for many birds. Birds use trees for perching, surveying their territories, foraging for insects and seeds, protection from predators and nesting. Most species of songbirds, even those that live in open, safe ecosystems, use trees on a daily basis. Even some shore birds, such as gray-throated herons, nest in trees or roost in trees at night. As the state of Washington adds new housing to the predicted growth in our population, the proposed language will protect human residences and at the same time protect the trees that are so important for both birds and wildlife. Please go to the proposed language and choose option two. However, your work will not be finished with the adoption of that language. What is not addressed in the proposed language is improving the Washington DNR map reference in the 2021 WUWE code amendments. As Brad Medrude explained, the Department of Natural Resources and Fox of Washington Senator Van De Way's office has admitted that there are many problems with that map. SBCC should be part of the process of improving. While WUWE codes allow local jurisdictions to create their own maps that represented in some small cities and counties testified already to SBCC, that they do not have the resources or staff time to make them. All western states are struggling to create useful, clear, and consistent maps of wildland urban interface areas. We can learn from their examples, Californians who have been mentioned, and Oregon has just decided that a public university is creating their Washingtonians preserve at least this little map of wildland urban interface areas as California or Oregon. SBCC can ask DNR to create a new map and
30 seconds?
Thank you for your
All right, thank you. Um, we are at the end of our list of folks who have signed up for testimony. Um, I'm going to call back for Claire Catania. If you're in our room, please use the raise hand function and you can speak. Uh, next, we skipped over Eric Seibel. If you are in the room, please use the raise hand function and we can allow you to speak. Not seeing any hands raised. If there's anybody else in attendance here today who would wish to speak, please utilize the raise hand function and you will be allowed to give testimony. I have Dave Kokot.
Good morning. My name is Dave Kokot. I am the Fire Protection Engineer with the Spokane Fire Department. I'm also a representative of the Washington State Association of Fire Marshals. I was partis, one of the participants of the Stablety Code Council Wildland Urban Interface Technical Advisor Group that developed the original language. Unlike the other members of that committee, I opposed the changes that came out of that original, original group. There were only three meetings in which discussions were held. It was obvious to me that we didn't have the proper stakeholders. And there were some of the committee members that had a specific agenda about what they wanted to be able to do. I was very concerned also. And it, 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 it is very interesting that I do agree with BIAW and that I believe that that was beyond the legislative directive and mandate of the council that they actually participated and did uh, want to make particular changes to the code. Enough that Bill 6120 was put together. We were fortunate to get a pre-filed version of that bill. And I'm not sure if people are aware or not, the original language removed the Building Code Council from having any authority to be able to make any modifications to the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Uh, our association was very concerned with that. We were able to get that language removed and worked with the Senator very clearly to provide at least a clear path for moving forward uh, in two different manners. The option that he was pushing for very, very clearly was to just put the highest level of ignition resistance construction. That could be what anybody could use, whatever area they're at, they would be able to meet that requirement. But there are other jurisdictions such as the City of Spokane that have adopted the International WUWE code that we do use the map. It isn't, it isn't complete, but it's fairly accurate. It works for us. So the only concerns we have is the ability to be able to make our modifications and to be able to utilize it to the best of our abilities. Another part of this is it's become obviously a more critical part of western, of eastern Washington, especially in Spokane County, as our city was bracketed by two major wildfires this last season. It was obvious to us what worked, what didn't work for the structures that survived the ones that didn't survive. It is very clear, and we agree with Senator Van De Way, that there should be flexibility by the local jurisdictions to be able to adjust the codes for their local jurisdictions. The east side of the state is completely different than the west side of the state. There are different needs, and there are different requirements. There are different ways to accommodate uh, not only the environment, not only the wildlife, not only just the development, but be able to make it work together. Uh, at this point, uh, we're, I'm also concerned that any action the Billy Code Council takes is going to be overridden by the action of the legislature. I'm hoping that the council will take that into consideration and delay any implementation of modifications to the code until the legislative session is completed and there is proper direction so that there is no conflict with the legislature. The council needs to work closer with the legislature to address these particular issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's anybody else in the room who would like to give testimony, please utilize the raise hand function, and you will be given permission to stop. All right, seeing no hands in the group, uh, we're going to pause the recording and monitor the guest list. If you want to give testimony, please use the raise hand function, and we will be monitoring and we'll give you permission to talk. Uh, we have Eric Siebel, who has raised his hand. Uh, Eric, you should be able to unmute, and your time starts when you start talking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Eric Seibel, and I live in Pierce County. I represent the Tacoma Audubon Society Conservation Committee. We're a chapter of the National Audubon Society. We have about 350 members in Pierce County and Tacoma environs. Um, I'm, I'm testifying to ask you to pass the language dated November 27th I'm I'm testifying to ask you to pass the language dated November twenty seventh that amends the twenty twenty-one Wildland Urban Interface Code amendments. This language modifies the defensive defensible space requirements so that homes will still be protected but from wildfires, but thousands of trees will not be removed. This is our greatest concern at Audubon is preserving bird habitat. And personally, as a citizen of the state, I'm concerned that trees, which are our best defense against climate change, will be destroyed en masse if the provisions of of the bill pass or the the code pass, the one that predates November twenty seventh. Preserving trees will prevent the wildland interface urban interface codes from conflicting with state laws that protect trees. And, um, you know, trees, we feel must be protected around residences to preserve the wildlife habitat and and also just because of their value to the community as a community asset. Audubon chapters across the country are focusing on preserving bird habitat. Human and human development and climate change has reduced the total number of birds in the western states by more than twenty-five percent in the last thirty years. And, um, given that Washington's population is going to increase, we're we're we are working hard to preserve our urban and rural and bird habitats. So we we understand that the state of Washington needs to build new houses and create conditions for new housing for the predicted growth in our population, but we cannot we we must preserve our our trees as a vital infrastructure against climate change and for and for the betterment of nature. Please vote for the proposed language. Thank you, and thank you so much for taking my comment.
Thank you, Eric. All right, if there's anybody else in the attendance on Zoom who wishes to give testimony, please utilize the raised hand function and we will allow you to unmute and give testimony. All righty, seeing no hands raised, we will pause the recording again until we get a raised hand and then we will begin testimony again. All righty, it is anybody raise their hands for testimony. I'm going to do a final call. Anybody in attendance in the Zoom meeting who wishes to deliver testimony, please utilize the raise hand feature and we can allow you to talk. All righty, seeing no hands raised. Uh, we're going to conclude the testimony period. Uh, this hearing has been held to consider testimony on the currently filed proposals for WAC fifty-one dash fifty-five, the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. All testimony presented at this hearing, along with all written comments received, will be part of the official hearing record for this proposal. The State Building Code Council will discuss the testimony and potential modifications to the initial proposals at the council meeting scheduled for February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. On behalf of the SBCC, thank you for participating in this hearing. This hearing now stands adjourned at twelve oh one P M. Thank you.